Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Select Board Meeting, Tuesday, September 26, 2023, Wake Forest Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, broadcast live on local cable Channel 8, streamed live on the Mashpee website. And I would like to convene the meeting. It is, I believe it's 6:31 in open session, and I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and free of any injustice or fraud.
May I have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. The minutes approval for the following Monday, September 11, 2023, regular session.
So move.
Second.
Have a first and second. All favor, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to change up here real quick. Can I have Town Clerk Deborah Kay, please?
Good evening. I'm here to ask you tonight, as a background, a couple of weeks ago, you voted on the election warrant for November 7. Inadvertently, the summary to the ballot question was left on the warrant that you signed. So I'm here tonight to simply ask that you vote the election warrant for November 7 without the summary on it. That's it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Not hearing any.
Why are we leaving the summary out?
You can't, you cannot have a summary on a prop two and a half question.
Okay.
Mr. Town Manager?
I did check with the town council. He advised that it be completed as she just suggested, but he was not certain that it was absolutely required. But he did recommend to eliminate any doubt by doing as was recommended.
So can I have a motion to remove the summary from
Second.
Town election ballot, correct?
Warrant.
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 And a second?
Yes.
All right, any questions? Discussion? Not hearing any? Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David? And myself as a yes.
Thank you.
You good?
We're good.
Awesome. Thank you. DPW Director Catherine Loret?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here for a few items with you. We recently advertised some bids and requests for proposals. The first project is the roof improvement at our DPW building. We received four bids, and I'm recommending that a contract be awarded to Gibson Roof, who is the lowest qualified bidder. The dollar amount was $169,000.
Okay. And it looks like it's the lowest qualified bidder?
Correct.
Just to clarify. Okay. Anybody in the board have any questions?
Just one, Deb, just to say, on the worksheet here, it shows that Jag Painting was among the applicants, and they seem to be lower than everybody. But is there any reason? I mean, substantial number difference, so I'm sure you have a reason for not moving with that. But is there any chance that, you know, they could get some work and build confidence in the town?
So their bid was not responsive because it was missing certain elements, so we were not able to accept the bid.
Because there were portions that were missing?
Correct.
Did you approach them and ask them? It was a substantial difference, that's all.
Yeah, that would not be considered a minor correction. Yeah.
Got you. Okay, thanks.
May I?
Sure.
Just a quick question. What was the original budget for this item?
So the original, so this was part of the larger capital bond that was approved. So the estimate at that time was $300,000, and that was looking at a replacement versus what we're proposing, which is a restoration. This restoration will provide still a 20-year warranty, but we had a consultant come take a look at the roof, and they felt that it was still in such a condition that we could do this restoration and not have to do a complete replacement. So it is about half of what we had estimated.
Thank you.
Question?
Chair.
Sure.
Are all the bidders local?
I'm not sure that we had any local bidders of the group. There was substantial interest in the project. I think we sent out almost two dozen bid packages, and some of them were local contractors, but none of the local contractors submitted a bid.
So these folks are from out of state?
Out of, I guess, by local, I'm thinking Cape Cod, so they are all off-Cape firms.
Okay.
Or contractors.
But they are within state?
Yes, they're in Massachusetts, correct. Yes.
So I had, I just bring that up because, you know, I think we should consider supporting local businesses as much as possible. I don't know if that's weighed in at all in our selection criteria, but I'm always an advocate for supporting local homegrown businesses.
I'd second that one.
I'm fine, thank you.
Can I have a motion to recommend the contract awarded to Gibson Roof? Do you have that?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Are there any more discussion? No? Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Carol? David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Next up.
The next project that, this was a request for proposals. This is the first of the school HVAC improvement projects, which again was a capital approval at the Maytown meeting. So this is for a contract for design and engineering for the ventilation and air conditioning improvements at the Casey Coom School. We did receive proposals from five firms, so the selection committee reviewed and interviewed, invited three for interviews, two of which were able to attend, and the unanimous recommendation was that a contract be awarded to Fitzmeier and Tachi Associates in the amount of $89,000.
So in this case, it was, this was the set amount that we were putting forward, or?
So in our request for proposals, we did specify a maximum proposal amount. This actually came in, the maximum amount was $95,000, so they did come in slightly less than the maximum.
Okay, as usual. Anybody have any questions?
A motion to approve Fitzmeier and Tachi?
First, and have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? Not having any? Is that with David?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
And the last item I have is snow-related, so this is the first I'll be at your next meeting to actually recommend contracts for our annual road salt bids. This is having to do with our snow plow contractors. As you all know, we've been fortunate the last few winters where we have not had a significant amount of snow, but we do always need to hire contractors in the event that we do go a plowable amount. It's more than what the town roads are, more than what the DPW can do ourselves. So last year, the board did increase our plow rates. I'm not proposing an increase. I think we're still competitive, but I am recommending, just to keep, I guess, interest amongst the contractors to sign on with the town, that we offer a signing bonus, that it would at least cover some of the incidental costs for them to be available to plow for the town. So I am recommending that we offer a $500 signing bonus. Like I said, that would just help offset those costs.
Mr. Collins?
It should come as no surprise that initially I was against this. However, I've done a lot of research in this, and the assistant and I have gone to some administrator-manager meetings, and the problem is there was a significant increase in insurance. So for these folks to sign on, particularly when last winter there was no snow, and I hope there's no snow again this year, I can say reluctantly I have to support it.
I just woke up. I get it. So, and I'm assuming it's, it's just like all the conversations every year, it's compete, and if not, we won't have any plows available to take care of Mashpee. So any other questions from the board?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second? Any discussion? Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Thank you all very much.
Good work, Catherine.
Want me to read it?
If you don't mind?
No.
Thank you.
Town of Mashpee Select Board Public Hearing Notice. The Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority for the Town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, September 26, 2023, at 6:40 in the Wake Forest Meeting Room of Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. The purpose of the said hearing is to consider modifications to the weekday entertainment license, including Saturday, Fiddle Corp. Doing Business as Soprano's Restaurante, 681 Falmouth Road, Unit 611, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. The modification would allow one amplifier for a solo guitarist, a one-to-two-person band, live music and recorded music outdoors until 10:00 p.m. The public is invited to attend and to present any question, comments, or concerns that they may have pertaining to this license. You may submit your comments and questions via e-mail, bos@mashpema.gov prior to the meeting date and time. The Select Board.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody from the board want to start, or even if you want to? I don't see anyone from the public?
This surprise is here. If you want to have them come up.
Yeah, I just wanted to see from the public. How are you?
Good.
So you want to just give us a quick overview? We just read what you're looking to do, but this is new, right?
Yeah, so what we have is just, we modified, like, we upgraded our patio, put new stone down, and now we're having entertainment out there, and then we, you know, like approval from you guys to be able to continue to do it. It's a little cold now to do it, but next summer is what we're looking for, yeah.
Okay. I would just like to throw a little caution, no matter what happens going forward, whether it's approved or not approved, but definitely if it is approved, just tread lightly and listen to your neighbors. If it becomes a concern and you have to come back in front of here, you know, the neighbors have a voice, so.
Okay.
Just consider, if you have complaints, just strongly consider that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody from the board? If not, I'll see if anybody from the public has anything to say?
Not at this time.
I was just going, if I may.
Sure.
Is this, so is this every, is it every day? How many days?
No, probably just Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday? Thank you.
Yeah, probably just Friday and Saturday.
Thank you.
During dinner, so.
Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak about? Okay.
I make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
I have a first and a second? All in favor?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
I make a motion to approve the entertainment license for Fiddle Corp. Doing Business as Soprano Restaurante, Falmouth Road, Unit A11, Mashpee. Manager, John McCarty.
I'll second that motion.
All right, have a first and a second? Any discussion?
I guess to Michaela's point, you know, would you be willing and amicable to, you know, having the language of putting specific days in? Would that be a deal breaker?
We could, but I generally like to keep it open just in case if we do, you know, want to have it on a Thursday or a Tuesday, unless there's any specific reason that, you know, the board would want to see it that way.
And mainly, it's in the summer, June, July, August. That's mainly when it is.
No, I do understand that. I guess, you know, this sounds like it's something new, so I guess, you know, testing the water or something from past experience. You know, I don't know if you've reached out to a butters and got public sentiment from a butters, one way or another, so that's where, you know, I think, doing damage, preventive damage control, I think, you know, I'd feel more comfortable if it set specific days or months as a test case, and then we can always change it and broaden it after, but, you know, I just, based on past experience, I'm a little leery of leaving it open-ended myself.
Yeah, we'd be willing to do that if we think it's necessary, so.
I was going to, in keeping with that, I was going to say, even if we specified two to three nights a week, I mean, it doesn't matter to me if it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday or other nights, but I think being able to limit it somewhat, at least at start, would be, would be a useful way to move forward. And then if your neighbors are feeling comfortable with it, then we could add more nights. It sounds as though you're looking to do this two nights a week, pretty much anyway.
Yeah.
So I don't know that we're asking for a big change.
Yeah, like we have a a cappella group on Thursday, and they go table to table, and they sing to the customers, so.
Yeah.
You know, that would probably be the third day.
And our neighbors, as Route 28 goes right beside, we don't have anybody that's really close around us, other than the condos that are way up back on the other end.
There's no residential.
So in reality, we don't really have that many neighbors.
You're right.
We had music over there when we were Cabos years ago, and, I mean, we very rarely ran into any complaints at all, as far as that goes. At the time, Rodney was there, and him and I had a chat about everything, and we have an understanding about the music.
It's easy to go along and get along, right?
Mr. Collins, did you want to add something to that, or? I know you.
I was just going to suggest that the board consider Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then they can come and revisit the board after the test run or trial run.
Sure.
Fair enough.
I like the idea of the limiting, that's a good idea, David, to start with. I mean, and again, just listen to what we're saying is, listen to your neighbors, because if you have to come back in here, we just, we have better things to do than.
We love all ears, but we don't really want to come back to us.
Okay, so three nights a week.
Yeah, I guess, just as a suggestion, looking for parity between past approvals and this approval where we've set precedent in the past, you know, allow for consistency and level playing field for all.
Sure.
But on the same token, he raises a good point, and the fact is that there really aren't any residential homes in that general area. They're all way behind it, up on the hill. Then you have the mall across the street, so it's totally different. It's not like by Dino's, you know, that the residence is in the backside of that.
Which I fully understand, and, you know, I don't anticipate any problems, but, you know, I'm just looking for consistency.
There was, and there was also a case where Mashpee Commons actually had music about a month ago, and people could hear it over at Southport.
Oh, yeah.
And there was a confusion that it was Dino's, and it was not.
Right.
And 151.
Noise travels, so.
Right, there was some loud music.
So I'm just, so does anybody have any further questions on? Do we have to close the public hearing, right?
I did.
You already did.
All right, so we're all set, so I have a motion. Motion approve?
I'd make a motion to approve the amended weekday entertainment license for Fid Corp., DBA Soprano's Restaurante, with recommended edits.
Which would be, would it be Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Three days.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you okay with those specific three days?
If we have a special event, we'll come back.
Fair enough.
That's fair.
Yep.
Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, motion Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and I have a second. All in favor? Michaela?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Have a good night.
Thank you for your presentation. Makes a difference.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, that was Fid Corp., right?
Yep. Now we got Dino's.
No. Where's Dino's?
Not next.
Joint Base. Oh, it's not next.
Huh?
It's not next.
Joint Base is next.
It's right, it's Joint Base next, right?
Yes.
Joint Base Cape Cod. Thank you all for coming in today. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Select Board, we really appreciate it. This, we try to get out at least once a year to the Select Board, and basically, we have several different ways we get information out. Other than this, for our town officials, the two biggest ones are our JOG, a Joint Oversight Group, in which we have a open session and a closed session. It happens once a month, the first Thursday of every month, and we just provide a myriad of information from many of our stakeholders, and it's just a good opportunity to understand what's going on out there. The other one is our MC Cubed, our Military Civilian Community Council, which is quarterly. Next one's in November?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thanks. You want me to move on? Okay. So that we go into a little more depth, and we have a lot, a little more information from the community, but, you know, encourage you all to attend. And as always, any of you can reach out to myself, Mr. Rendon, or anyone else on the base, if you have any questions. More than happy to give anyone a tour, or sit down and have some individual, individual conversations, just to, just to make yourselves more comfortable in what we do out there. So I'm Brigadier General Retired Chris Fo, the Executive Director of Joint Base Cape Cod. I'm kind of the mouthpiece for the beginning, and then we're going to hear from the commanders that do most of the real work out there. But first of all, myself, and behind the scenes, doesn't put his name up, is my executive officer, Mr. Rendon. He's, he's the guy that gets a lot done out there. He's the one that's in my earpiece telling me how to work this computer, because that's really not my forte. Colonel Begalio was unable to make it. Colonel Porter is more than, more than a worthy substitute for Colonel Begalio. Colonel Riley is also not here. Colonel Gordon is the Deputy Commander of the 102nd, again, more than worthy of presenting tonight. Lieutenant Colonel Stu Smith from Six Base Warning Squadron, you've heard him called pave paws in the past, and Base Cape Cod is Captain Bowen Spivak, and Captain Rob Potter is also unable to make it, and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name.
Commander Joe Plunkett, sir.
Plunkett?
Yes, sir.
Like Jim Plunkett?
Yes, sir.
Patriots quarterback, all right. Sorry, I didn't need to go back that far. So, and, you know, frankly, what we really want to do is make sure we have open dialogue with the community. There really aren't any, I mean, there's obviously some questions from the intelligence wing that we can't answer, but for the most part, you know, there's nothing that we can't discuss with you folks. So I just hit, I just got to go here, see what's next. I'm not going to read my slides, but basically, you'll see the vision and the mission, and it's basically what I told you. We want to have a transparent relationship with the community, and basically, you know, I will always tell you, my number one priority will always be the men and women that work and live on Joint Base Cape Cod, but it's also a high priority to make sure that we integrate that with the community and make sure that, you know, you have a say. And again, it is not a time you just call. More than happy, I'm more than happy to come visit the town or a portion of the town, or have you out. Love to have you all on a tour. I think some of the tours that we've been doing, especially in the northern part of the reservation, are very insightful, and I think you'd all be impressed. So let me go to the next slide here. So I already briefed this, Joint Oversight Group. So Joint Oversight Group started, so just to let you know, Joint Base Cape Cod is a joint base by gubernatorial declaration. It's not a federally declared joint base. What does that mean? We have no real joint funding, and there is no overall commander with authority. So we basically rule by committee, and the Joint Oversight Group was formed to get that group together on a monthly basis, and we get together more often than that. Very successful. It's great to work with the partners out there, you know, everybody wants the same thing. We want to be successful. And again, the MC Cubed is just a little more in-depth. We go into some detail on projects and issues that are going on, and the MC Cubed is basically what we define it as, the Contolman Area, which is our lower 7,000 acres, which is not part of the Upper Cape Water Reserve and the training area, so Contolman Area issues are addressed at the MC Cubed. All right, so we'll get to that next year. All right, at that, I will turn you over to good hands with Colonel Tim Gordon, who's going to give you a briefing on the 102nd Intelligence Wing. But before I do, does anybody have any questions of me? Thanks.
I just want to thank Colonel Porter. He came out to one of the administrator-manager meetings. It was very informative and really appreciated all of the information, and you were highly complimented after you left.
Thank you, sir. And again, you know, just anytime you want someone to support those meetings, just please reach out to us. We'd be happy to do it. So on further ado, Colonel Tim Gordon, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Chairman. I'm Colonel Tim Gordon, the Deputy Commander of the 102nd Intel Wing, and what I'd like to do tonight is provide you with a brief overview of our wing and provide an update on some of our projects, and then I'm going to close with a one-minute video that I will try to project here. So anyhow, this is, we call this our placemat slide. You know, the 102nd Intel Wing is part of the Massachusetts Air National Guard. We're comprised of about 1,200 airmen, spread across these five groups, about 400-plus are full-time, the rest are what we call traditional guardsmen. So we've got five groups. The first is the 102nd ISRG. ISR stands for Intelligence Surveillance and Reconnaissance. This, this mission is a network-centric intelligence collection mission that is centered around the concept of reach-back, meaning that a commander in the field is able to essentially reach back and get critical intelligence relative to their area of operations and get that in real time. The 202 ISRG, the second one over, this group operates in the cyberspace environment, providing cyber intelligence to Air Force operations and other joint operations across the globe. The, over to the far right, the 253rd CEIG, that stands for Cyber Engineering and Installation. This group is responsible for the engineering and installation of communication lines, radar, navigation systems at US Air Force bases, worldwide, actually, and domestically at Air Force, Air National Guard installations. And the kind of work that they do ranges from something that's, you know, small jobs such as installing camera systems, security camera systems, to far more complex fiber-optic installations across an entire base. In the middle is our medical group. Our medical group essentially has two missions. The first is to ensure that our wing members are fit to fight, that they have their physicals, their vaccinations, their dental exams, et cetera. And the other, the other mission is their domestic operations mission, which is to support domestic emergencies requiring medical attention. And the other, the other mission is their domestic operations mission, which is to support domestic emergencies requiring medical attention. And they did a heck of a lot of this during COVID, and they continue to provide services today. The 102 Mission Support Group, which is the group that essentially keeps the base open for business. They're responsible for the roads, utilities, base communication, and base security. And next slide. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about our resources and then, then our people. So, over the past ten years, really closer to twenty years, we've been in the process of transforming our base from a fighter, industrial-type base to more, much smaller, intelligence campus-like base. We've had a lot of facility upgrades since 2018, approximately thirty million dollars in either new construction or renovations or demolitions, and we have another fifteen million planned. The land divestment process is very slow. There's a lot of bureaucracy involved in that, but essentially, we're trying to get, we're trying to decrease our acreage on the Air Force side from thirty-six hundred acres that we currently have, either through lease or federal ownership, to about two to three hundred acres, essentially. That's what we need. So, that's a, a long-term goal that we're, we're, we're working on. And then finally, I know we've talked a lot about water and wastewater and the exchange. I'm told that by September thirtieth, a contract will be awarded to ASUS and Converge, which are the, the operator and owner, or future owner of the water and wastewater assets on Joint Base Cape Cod. So, this contract will fund the operation of the water and wastewater systems on the joint base, and it will allow for the transfer of the assets from the Air Force to Converge. So, that's, that's, you know, long, long, long time coming, right? But finally, we're getting a lot closer to actually transferring those assets. And finally, I always like to close with commenting on our people. We are very proud of our members and the work that they do. And as you are probably aware, the past six months have been extremely challenging for the men and women of the 102nd Intel Wing. But I can assure you that our airmen are committed to serving our country and our Commonwealth. They do so with professionalism and pride, and they refuse to be defined by the actions of one. So with that, I would like to play a little, little video that we put together. The 102nd Intelligence Wing, an organization of dedicated citizen airmen who make up a trusted team that are always ready, always there. Many serve in the intelligence surveillance and reconnaissance mission. ISR provides photographic and video intelligence analysis to commanders worldwide. Our airmen produce actionable intelligence from data collected from a variety of ISR platforms. Cyber ISR adapts these same tactics in the cyberspace domain, curtailing an adversary's ability to impact information systems. Cyber engineering and installation represent the design and installation of critical communications anywhere in the world. From fiber optics to wireless networks to satellite communications, we ensure critical information is available to the warfighter around the clock and around the globe. Our agility and tenacity, combined with the training and equipment we use to fight our nation's wars, is what makes us the best option for rapid response during domestic emergencies. An essential partner within the Commonwealth, ready to assist our neighbors in times of need. We are fully capable, mission-ready, and prepared to meet the challenges of the 21st century. So, that is my brief pending your questions.
I just have a quick one. I, I love the discussion about the divesting of, of land. I'd be happy to talk, happy to have Mashpee discuss some acreage coming our way.
Sure. We, we will, we will entertain any conversation, won't we, General Fo? I said, we, we, we're, we're interested in speaking with anybody about divesting land.
Anybody else, anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Alright, good evening. I am Lieutenant Colonel Stu Smith. I'm the Squadron Commander for the Sixth Space Warning Squadron at Cape Cod Space Force Station. So, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about what we do, what our mission is. We're part of the base here, and we're actually kind of toward the very northernmost part. If you've ever been past the Sagamore Bridge and the Market Basket, you may have seen our, our gate, where you can get onto our site, kind of secluded there. We don't want everybody to know we're there, but it's there. So, we're about a hundred and thirty-five folks there. If you combine all the military, civilian, and contractors who work there and help run the site. Within the military side for Sixth, Sixth Space Warning Squadron, there's typically anywhere between thirty to thirty-five space operators who man the radar, who, who work the radar. There's usually two of them on duty at any given time, twenty-four, seven, who are performing our, our missions there, which are missile warning, missile defense, and space domain awareness. We've also got Security Forces members, Air Force Security Forces members, who are part of our Space Force Squadron, usually about thirty to thirty-five defenders. Security Forces airmen who also are part of the unit and protect the site. There's usually about four of them on duty at any given time, and they're there also twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five to protect that location. And so, together, we work also with a contractor team. Local company, well, company's called Endine. They actually support radars across the United States and abroad. All the other similar radars are sister sites that do the same mission. But contractors, but folks who've worked here, even as the contract changes, they, they change shirts, they change logos, but it's often the same folks who've worked there for twenty, thirty years and know the site like the back of their hand. Many of them locals, so it's great to work with them. You know, as we come and go, they stay, and they're our continuity. They get to, to help make sure the place is running smoothly. Part of that, too, is also about a half a dozen government civilians who are part of the squadron as well. And again, they're, they're continuity for us, too. So, all together, we keep the site running. A little bit about our missile warning mission. So, so the reason we were originally built between 1976 and 1980 is because of the threat from Soviet submarine-launched ballistic missiles, which if you watch the news, still perhaps a concern today, and very relevant that we're around. We provide strategic missile warning. If a missile were to come our way, we would, in combination with some of our other partner squadrons, see those, detect those, and report them to the Missile Warning Center, for example, in Cheyenne Mountain, and that would kick off a whole, a whole series of, of events for the military and for the government to, to take action on. Our, what we sometimes call our co-primary mission, it's, it's right up there with missile warning, is missile defense. And, and that is a whole separate community who is concerned with trying to intercept a missile if one were coming our way. The focus there is very much on bad actors or rogue nations, if you will, think North Korea or perhaps Iran, if they were to launch a missile our way. Our data, while we're tracking that missile, just like we track it and send that information to the missile warning community, we would simultaneously be sending that information to the missile defense community. So, if perhaps that data needed to be used for targeting purposes, it could be. Our secondary mission, but also kind of our third mission, but it takes kind of a backseat to that in priority, is one we're actually doing all the time. You know, fortunately, folks aren't launching missiles at us every day, but what we are doing all the time, every second of every day, is tracking satellites and space debris. That, that crew of two space operators there, they're, they're quite busy these days, much busier than I was when I was a lieutenant. There's way more up there. If you watch the news, and you have SpaceX and Starlink and all sorts of others that are getting in the game, there's launches, several launches worldwide every week, maybe more. And so, every day, there's more things up there that they're tracking, and that data goes to some of the other squadrons in the Space Force that concern themselves with space traffic management or, or taking all that, almost like the air traffic control does for the ground and for the air rather. They're doing that for space, and so that data that we provide helps them continue to maintain a good track on where those satellites are, where that space debris is, and they can compute all of that and determine, you know, hey, what's the likelihood of something crashing into someone else? Do we need to notify a satellite owner or operator? Hey, you might want to consider a maneuver to get out of the way, things like that. And, you know, as, as the space domain becomes more contested, that data's going to be used for, for units who concern themselves in protecting satellites on orbit. Some of our strategic competitors or potential adversaries, call them what you will, they're already working on technology like that. There's a lot of that that's available at the unclassified level that you can find on the news about tests that have done, been done. So, again, another mission that continues to be relevant and only, only continues to grow. So, a bit about us, we, as part of the Space Force stand-up, we've kind of morphed and evolved. You've heard about, you know, groups and wings earlier from the Air Force. Our, our construct is a bit leaner, a bit flatter, part of the selling point, I guess. And so, we have squadrons, but above that, we have deltas, that, that triangular shape. You see the bottom left-hand corner there, that delta shape, and then we also have our field commands above that. And so, leaner organization. Our parent organization is out in Colorado. Space Delta Four is what it's called. Each of the deltas has a mission focus. Delta Four focuses on missile warning. Okay, we also have two members who are Royal Canadian Air Force. There's a longstanding partnership with Canada, part of that NORAD-Northcom relationship. And so, we've got two Canadian members who are fully certified as space operators and can operate the radar and are part of the team, fully integrated. Okay, next slide. We'll talk a little bit about our folks some more. Yeah, so we have an operating budget. This, this includes, you know, our utilities and our, our operations and maintenance for the site. Doesn't necessarily include the, the contract I mentioned with Endine earlier, but we, actually, if you've noticed, we have a couple of wind turbines that are near the site. The two that are closest to the site actually do belong to us. They don't feed energy to the radar, but they do feed energy to the grid, and we're credited with that, so it actually helps, help us stay green and helps defray quite a bit of our energy bills. So, that's nice. We've got great partnerships with the base here. Many of our families, some of our families do live on base. We've got about eight or, eight or so families who live on base in base housing that the Coast Guard manages. We've got many of our junior enlisted also live on base in unaccompanied housing, so they're, they're taking care of us there. We have a longstanding relationship with the Coast Guard Medical Clinic on the base. We have an Air Force Major who's part of the unit, who is integrated fully into their staff and sees us as well as their patients. And we've got other agreements with local fire and law enforcement for mutual aid. If something were to happen, we have our defenders who are with us, but depending on what's happening and where it is, we might need to, to call on some local law enforcement. We have a nice relationship with the rest of the base. We have a facility that we call the Lighthouse. It's kind of a gathering place where folks can have ceremonies and things, so we offer that up routinely to the other units on base to take advantage of. Okay, well, at this time, I'd like to open it up for any questions you may have.
What changed the mission to include Space War Force? In one of your earlier slides, you mentioned-
Sure, let's back up.
I think-
Changed the mission.
Space Warfighters?
Oh, yeah. So, in the bottom left, that was my boss, Colonel Cruz, back from Space Delta Four. Yeah, so Space Force primarily focuses on space operations, intelligence, and, and cyber as well. So, for many, many years, to talk about conflict in space was taboo. It really isn't anymore because of the possibility that it could happen, or at least our, our need to be ready to prevent it. And so, trying to cultivate warrior ethos, as you can see from his quote, for us to be, you know, proud of what we do, and also, you know, that much more prepared to do our jobs well so that, you know, those in a position to perhaps conduct that would be able to do their job even better.
In the news, in the news, we've seen some of the unmanned devices kind of hovering and data collecting and things. Who, who would be responsible for monitoring those types of things? I think some of them are attributed to, like, China.
Okay, I suppose it would depend on what domain that those would be in, if it was space or air or land or out on sea. So, if it was in space, that's something we're watching for. We, we track foreign satellites just as easily as, as domestic satellites as they're going overhead. So, for us, we focus on low Earth orbit, up to about three thousand miles. There are other, other radars and optical telescopes that can go all the way out to geosynchronous orbit, depending on where they are placed in the world. So, if it's in low Earth orbit, we're going to see it. It's, it's hard to hide.
Thank you. Good.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Selectman, Commander Joe Plunkett. Seventeen years coastie, fifteen years as a helicopter pilot, New Hampshire native, and glad to say a new Mashpee resident.
Nice.
Yeah, no, no-
Save the best for last.
Know, know your audience. Over on Niningard Ave, just on the southeast corner of John's Pond. Chief Operations at Air Station Kodiak, so, and now here at Air Station Cape Cod. So, you guys are pretty familiar with our mission we've been doing here. Air Station Cape Cod's the oldest continuous operating air station. We fly both helicopters and planes. You guys see us flying around. Probably the most obvious orange and white aircraft in the skies. I get a lot of calls, mostly positive from the orange and white aircraft out doing the mission. Our missions we do here, mostly search and rescue, we're supporting the fishing industry. And then additionally, as I move through quickly here, to our core, our core missions here at Cape Cod. A couple of notable cases there for you guys to see and do. Most recently, Hurricane Lee came through, as everybody was aware. Won it being really a pretty big windstorm for us. We relocated a couple of our fixed-wing assets away from the shore. And the biggest event for us was, we rescued two folks off of Long Island, disabled sailboat, and a little, little battered by weather and some seasickness. And like you see there, we do some other missions to the south. We support variety of districts all the way down, and then additionally do some living marine resources. So, the fisheries offshore from Maine all the way to New Jersey are our responsibility. So, supporting a federal and local state partners there. And then just a quick talk briefly about our folks. So, close to two hundred folks at Air Station Cape Cod, and these are the folks embedded in your community here in Mashpee. And there's a whole list of folks there that are doing the king's business, but then doing it very well and representing Cape Cod really externally. Lots of really good folks and, you know, really staying plugged in. And so, today, I want to extend myself as the outreach to this community as well, both as a local resident and when you have both positive, negative feedback, or when you need a resource. I want to be that phone call that you make and say, hey, hey, Joe, we've got this thing at the high school. We could really use a rescue summer. We could really use somebody to do some FaceTime. Or, hey, the helicopter's being really loud at this hour of the night in this area. Can you knock it off, right? Like, let's build that partnership and work together, and that's what I'm here to do. There's nothing new that you guys haven't seen from a Coast Guard brief before, but introduced myself. We're here to be a part of the community. And any questions? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Go. Captain Spivak, the CEO of Base Cape Cod.
Welcome to Mashpee.
Good evening. It's evening. Bowen Spivak, I got to Cape Cod this past June. I am not a New Hampshire, not, I'm not hail from New Hampshire, but I am from Cambridge, Mass, so it's like coming back home. So, I appreciate the Coast Guard sent me back home. As General Fo and my, my learned brothers have said, the best thing about being in the Coast Guard is great people. And whether that's my joint service brothers and sisters, local, state, I mean, we, the Coast Guard, if you've seen any of the news stories, we are, we are always working in teams. And so, we appreciate just a lot of the cooperation and coordination we get from all, all partnerships. I'm not maybe as exciting as Commander Plunkett and his aviators, but without support, you can't have the missions. So, that's the business that I'm in. You can see there from the list, it's not just Air Station Cape Cod and Base Cape Cod. We have our Marine Safety and Security Team. We've got our Reservists and our Port Security Unit that are, that are at Base Cape Cod. We've got our, what we call NERF Tech, but it's a short way of saying Regionals Fisheries Training Center. We've got our Armory Range and Marine Safety Detachment Cape Cod, so there are a lot of other units we support. And you can see, if you've ever been down to Woods Hole, we've got the sector there, Sector Southeastern New England, and they have obviously infrastructure there, but they also have, as my brother was mentioning, we have Coast Guard families that live on Base Cape Cod. I also live on Base Cape Cod as well. Let's see. as well. Let's see. Not surprisingly, I already mentioned it before, we do support. So in addition to the things I already mentioned, we've got facilities, engineering staff that work with all our partners on all that engineering work that we do. Personnel-wise, we already mentioned on-base housing, but we've got folks like Commander Plunkett and others that live on the economy, out in towns around Cape Cod and other parts of Massachusetts and other states as well. And on-base, we are really thrilled to have some opportunities for our families. So when folks and families do have some downtime, there's the Falcon Golf Course on base, and there's outdoor pool, and our, what we call MWR, but morale, wellness, and recreation. We have a whole staff of folks that puts on, you know, fishing derbies and things for the families that, whether you're on Base Cape Cod or you're military active-duty reserve civilian, you can come and enjoy those opportunities. And pay ID cards, those basics that if you don't have pay right, it's not a good thing in any job. So we provide ID, military ID card office, and obviously pay support orders when people go on deployments, things that naturally come with the stressors and the realities of Coast Guard service and service at large. So that's all I have, pending in your questions, but really excited to be here, be back in the great Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's been a while since I've been stationed here.
Great. Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I like to save the best for last, so I'm more than happy to step up in that role.
You're the closer, huh?
So, yeah, Colonel Matt Porter. I know most of you have seen me before. I've been doing this for five or six years now. But no longer the Camp Edwards commander, John Begaglio, we've changed command, and he is now the commander of Camp Edwards, and I am now the commander of the 151 RSG up in Redding. But my full-time job is the base operations manager, which just think of me as a town manager. That's essentially what I do for the Camp Edwards, for the Army side. So not too much different than potentially a town, and certainly not much different than my Coast Guard support brethren as well. So that's what we do. We basically are there to provide training facilities for the Army National Guard. We maintain them, restore them, build them, in order to support the training mission so our soldiers can either support the governor and the domestic operations that we do, or deploy overseas and fight our nation's wars. So that's what we've been doing for a long, long time, and we'll continue to do that. So. So some of the training that we support and some of the facilities that we have, so just looking at some of the training activities, nothing too crazy. I mean, we do just, you know, we do simulations, we do ranges, we do obstacle courses, some of those traditional things that you see on TV when you think about some Army training. And we do some specialized training like aerosol Pathfinder Raven training. We also have some great training lands out there, about 15,000 acres that we can do maneuvers on. We also have helicopters that will use those landing zones that we have out in the 15,000 acres for some of their training as well. So we have quite a bit of diversity in what we train on, whether it's in Contonan and using our barracks and support facilities, or in the northern training area where we'll use LZs and ranges for some of our training for our soldiers as well. Some of the operations that we've done in the past are Operations Viking. You probably remember that when we did some airborne operations, we actually jumped out of airplane, perfectly good airplanes, and landed on the airfield. That was kind of unique for Camp Edwards. We don't do that a lot. We don't have a drop zone, per se. We have a airfield, which is a hard landing drop zone. But they did it successfully and no major injuries. So that was great. And this year was really kind of a moderate year, I would say, for training activity. The couple of years prior had been kind of light, but we're starting to trend up in the directions as we come out of COVID and move back into more, what we call kind of collective training, and get the units back together. Part of our mission, as many of you know, and probably some of you have taken our tours, it's not just training. We have to, you know, as part of Chapter 47, you know, we have to, you know, protect the aquifer, but also support the natural habitat in the northern 15,000 acres to ensure, or really, on all our training lands and all our lands that the National Guard uses, in accordance with the Sykes Act and Chapter 47. We've got to make sure that the species that we have, and I think we have 43, might be listed there, but I think we have about 43 listed species on the base, which is remarkable. And you think that is a detriment, that is not. That is actually, you know, something that we're striving for. We go out there and we look and support the habitats for these species, and there's a reason for it. It's because we provide great habitat and we restore habitat. Most of the time, we've got Jake and his team going out there, and they're in the field. They spend as much time in that field as possible in order to ensure that the habitat is being preserved and restored properly. Counter to many beliefs, it's actually, you know, a soldier's habitat and the species that, you know, live and reside on the base are very similar. So it has to be that way, otherwise, you know, we wouldn't be able to do it. So where it does impede, we change our training tactics. So if, like, for instance, we have some roosting bats in a certain area, we have to change, you know, we no longer use those landing zones for helicopters. We have to fly above a certain elevation, and we put, you know, a restricted area around that. So we, you know, make sure that we don't impede the roosting of those bats. And that's just one example. We do that for a lot of different things, whether it's salamanders, whether it's agazi clam shrimp, you know, and puddles and stuff, you know, we definitely tailor some of our training and how we train to make sure that the habitat is preserved and taken care of. Is that it? So was it for some reason? But anyways, I don't want to end it there. I know we want to talk a little bit about some of our, some of the projects that we've been doing. Namely, I'll talk first, multi-purpose machine gun range, just give a quick update, because I know some of you are interested. Really, nothing has changed too much at this point. We still, we've received the draft findings. I'm sure everybody read that from the EPA. At this point, it's our hope that we'll enter into some sort of negotiations to, in order to mitigate some of the concerns they have on the range, and incorporate that into design or into the range planning, and then move forward from there. At this point, we haven't entered that trajectory yet, but we're hopeful that we will. So that's kind of where we are. So really, not much has changed at this point. We got a couple other projects going on that you might be interested in. I'll start with the range project. It's really just design at this point, but it's, we have an infantry squad battle course. It's a range that already exists. We already train on it, but it needs modernization. It hasn't been modernized in, I don't know how many years. So not much as far as construction. There would just be, some of the objectives would be put in there. So it's really just in the design portion, and you'll hear more about it as we go through that process. But it's really just a, it's a range that already exists for that purpose. It's an infantry squad battle course already, so it's not us taking something and changing it. It's what it is already. I'll be happy to take any questions if you have on any of that. We have a track that we're going to build in the Contonan area, right next to our gym. We've been authorized a track for years. We've been making use of a paved area that we paved just north of our gym. We got finally the funding in order to actually build the track, in order to help support our combat fitness test that we do. That track will be, like I said, placed in the field that is adjacent to the gym that is already used for that purpose, you know, some of our PT training that we already do. We have a fuel point that we have designed. It's likely going to be redesigned, just because it came in very expensive, and I don't think we need as much of a fuel point as we have currently there. So likely that'll enter into some sort of redesign, de-scoped a little bit, and we'll probably, hopefully, have some sort of solution sometime this year for that fuel point. We are rehabbing one of our barracks, so we'll be doing an interior, exterior rehab of one of our barracks in the Contonan area. That is actually starting now, I think tomorrow, actually, where we'll start to clear out the space and let the contractor take possession of the barracks so they can start building, working on that. We've already replaced all the roofs on all of those barracks, and now they're just doing the exterior and interior as we try to modernize there. And then lastly, just some of the domestic operations that we've been doing that you probably have heard about, but we have, you know, the governor asked us to support her mission on eliminating homelessness. She directed that a shelter be built, or, you know, some of our facilities be used to build a shelter in order to support some of the homeless in the area, and also some of them coming down from Boston. So we did that. So we took our BOQs, which is basically our basic officer quarters, that we normally use for officers or senior enlisted that come down and train, and we converted them into homeless shelters, really, is what it is. So it's a bunch of townhouses that we use. So about 260 people, roughly, up and down, probably plus or minus five or 10 a day. But I think it's about 60 or 65 families in total that are being housed there right now. With that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Is there, to that note, is there a bid in process now to take on, or is there like four bases across Massachusetts that are bidding for the potential housing of more immigrants?
I wouldn't, I don't think there's a bidding process that I know of anyways, nothing that I'm involved in. I'm not sure. Where do you, have you heard that from somewhere?
I have, but I don't know if it's where they're best suited to be placed.
Right.
Maybe that's the, maybe not a bidding process, but I have heard that there's, they're looking at military installations across the state to, you know, bring in immigrants from wherever. And I don't know if that's-
Yeah. So I haven't heard as far as our installation, whether they're looking to bring more in. We only have so much for facilities that we've offered up, that we can afford to do without, you know, it's, BOQs are important for us, but it's, it's not, you know, it's something, it's a nice to have, that we've had for a long time. But, you know, for the short term, we can do without in order to support the governor and her mission, or our mission, really. But I have not heard of increasing that or anything like that at this point. Any other questions? You guys are easy tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to actually thank you all for your service, and thank you for your time coming in today on behalf of the board and the town of Mashpee. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. Very good hosts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public comment. Lynn Barbie.
Lynn Barbie Surf Drive, I'd just like to say to our military friends, my dad was flying out of Otis Air Force Base in the early 60s, which is how I ended up here on Cape Cod. I was here for four years. But that's not why I came tonight. I just want to do a little public service announcement. The Orange Shirt Day is happening this Saturday. It is a commemoration of, it's a national day for truth and reconciliation for indigenous youth and families. I don't have to explain it all, but it's at the Mashpee Rotary from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Wear an orange shirt and show your support, and I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Communications Correspondence, old business, review and discussion of possible extension of the temporary amendment issued on August 7, 2023, to weekday and Sunday, and Sunday entertainment licenses for Bonsable Pizza and Pasta Company, Inc., dealing business as finally Dino's. All right.
Good evening.
Hi, Dino.
Good evening, all.
So. Do you want to, can I just give a quick synopsis of how you think it went?
Absolutely. Personally, I think, felt went very, very well. We did about 10 evenings, a couple, you know, for the last five weeks, we did about 10 nights. A couple of, you know, hiccups, a couple of times the neighbors called, Mr. Duncan Campbell called. We took care of the situation right away. Everything was well-received. Other than that, other than those two nights, you know, different times, we just turned it down, or we just, you know, made it the accommodations, you know, for Campbell's. They're the ones, pretty much the only ones affected. The problem over there is we have a wind issue. Once the wind blows a certain way, it blows right to their house. If the wind's blowing towards 151, you hear anything. You can't even hear it in kitchen. But sometimes the wind carries it. I mean, that's noise. It just carries it and everything else. But that's when he calls us, we tell him, we turn it down. He called me the other night. And it had, the two times it happened, it was funny because we don't have a band really playing. Like, the other night, when they called Friday night, I happened to be out of town. I was visiting my son down in Florida. But the, it was two Mashpee kids, one 16-year-old girl and an 18-year-old boy playing. So they played a couple of times, and she's got a great, strong voice. It's a keyboard and acoustic guitar. So it's not even like we're playing in a band, but the voice was carrying, you know. So sometimes we just, we control it as best as we can, but the voice carries. It's not like some loud banging like when we had the, you know, the Baha Brothers and everything else, when there was, you know, you know, you could hear it down the street. So there was, like I said, a couple of hiccups. I think overall, it was great. I think the synergy between myself and Duncan Campbell was good. I think it was good. I mean, a couple nights a week, and we're done by eight. And the other night, I mean, there was a couple complaints. We shut it off early, you know, just to, because we couldn't control. That night wasn't there either. So we really couldn't control the wind, so we just shut it down a few minutes early, you know, just to make it accommodation for the neighbors. But we're definitely done by 8 o'clock the latest.
Okay. Anybody from the board have anything? If not, I want to tell you, anybody from the public?
Good for now.
Want to wait? Okay. Is there anybody from the public that wants to say anything regarding, no? Okay. Anybody from the-
You're going to do this on the same schedule of-
Yeah, it's next year now. We're done for the season. So, yeah, but it's going to be a couple of nights a week, the same thing. I mean, even in the last meeting, Duncan Campbell said that, you know, it doesn't matter if it's six nights a week, if we can't hear it, doesn't make a difference, you know. But in the, it's not going to be, you know, something like that. It just doesn't, there isn't enough demand for five nights a week outside. You know, that's, you know, it's the weekends, the two nights is good, maybe a third night, you know, depending. Last Sunday, we had, we did an event for the military. We did it for the disabled veterans and homeless veterans. And we had that, the state trooper singing. And he was loud, but they couldn't even hear it over there. It was just how the wind blows sometimes, you know. Dan Clark is his name. Dan Clark, the one that sings the National Anthem and everything else. He was there, and he was singing really loud, but the wind wasn't blowing that way, and you can't hear it. So.
You know, we did get a couple emails of concern, but to be honest with you, they were both on the same day, on August 16.
Yeah.
I'm not so sure that even in the emails that's stated, they weren't even sure if the noise was coming from Dino's. And I actually had heard a rumor that it may not be coming from Dino's, and it may be coming from a different establishment. So, and that was the only two complaints that I received. And my understanding from the town manager, is that correct?
Nobody has contacted me.
So I don't have any problem with continuing down this road. And I, no matter how we go decide if we continue the permit, if you will, I just would stress the urgency to address your neighbors. If there is an issue, just-
Absolutely.
Take care of it, address it.
Yeah, we did.
So you don't have to-
And it's a good relationship now. Now, the relationship is mended, you know, because we went two years without talking to each other. So now, now, you know, we're on speed dial, you know, whenever there's an issue, call them right away. And he calls me and- And he calls me and, you know, we take care of it right away.
I think that's what we want to hear.
Yep. No, it was, it was time. I mean, you know, as you get older, sometimes you get a little...
Been doing this a long time now, Dino.
I've been doing this a long time, and the older we get, the less, you know, we like mellow out a little bit, you know.
No offense, Dino, but I don't want to see you in this room.
I really don't want to be here either, trust me.
Outside is, okay.
This must have been at least the 100th time I've been here in the last 30 years.
So would we be looking to do three, a three-day? You want to kind of keep it consistent with the three? I know in your case, Dino, you kind of, you might use Sunday, so are we good with just keeping it as three days?
I think that's what we suggested on the last one.
Not specific to a day, but just three days.
Yeah, that's...
Can I have a motion to approve a permit for three days?
Motion to approve, finally, Dino's weekday and Sunday entertainment license review and approve, and approval with recommended edits.
With the three days.
To include three days.
Second.
All right, first and second, any discussion?
No, I'm fine.
Michaela?
Yes.
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 David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Good luck.
How about that?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Hopefully it won't be back next year.
Hopefully.
Good luck on that.
That will not be good. All right. Discussion approval amendment order of betterment assessment and amended certification of betterment assessment for Cedar Street, Chestnut Street, Devon Street, Ash Street, Hawthorne Street, and Gina Way.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, please, Mr. ...
You are receiving a memo from the treasurer, tax collector, relative to this subject matter, and I think it's self-explanatory.
Betterment needs to be readopted?
Discussion approval, the ordered betterment assessment.
So this is a little, it's a little different though, right? What's going, Rodney, is this? What are you looking for us?
We're going to, just as it says in the, in here, to approve and amend order of betterment assessment and amend certificate of betterment. And what happened was that when you, when they first did the betterment, they added a 5% in there that should not have been added. So we have to amend it to be able to record it again.
Okay.
And, and it's less than what they were originally given as a total. So it's working to their benefit. It was a mistake, just an error, that's all.
Okay, so it's a financial correction?
Yes.
To the better of the, for the betterment?
It's number, it's number three on here, right? Primarily that the readopting lowers the cost to the property owner for those that pay within the 30 days? Is that a major change?
So, so is it my understanding we're not putting in any interest? Rate, we're not locking ourselves to any interest rate at all? It's going to vary accordingly?
No, what happened was that on all of these loans, if you do it over that 20-year period, it's a 5% interest. And what happens if a person pays for it in advance? They don't get that interest rate, they just pay off what they owe. And what happened here is when we did the whole calculation, we added the 5% into the total, which we should not have done.
All right, yeah, no.
That makes sense.
Yep.
The treasurer caught it.
Okay, so...
Did anybody pay?
Yes, in fact, someone did come in and pay, and we had to refund the money, so.
Do we have to approve restitution?
We didn't cash the check, we just sent it back and it's...
So we're looking for a motion to approve?
The readopting lower cost to the property owner for those who pay within the 30 days.
This is housekeeping of formality.
Is that a?
A motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
How was it framed again? You just referenced the memorandum?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of...
The cost to the property owner for the pay...
Well, what you're doing is approving...
Well, there's three, I mean, there's several amendments. So I would, I would make a motion. I'd recommend making a motion based on the September 26 memorandum relevant to the Cedar Street betterments identified 1 through 5.
Really, all you have to do is just approve the amended order of betterment assessment and amended certification of betterment for the assessments on those streets.
So moved.
It's clean.
Yeah, that sounds clean.
This is the first time we have dealt with a correction of a betterment of a betterment.
Delay any further.
All right, so I have a first and a second, any more discussion?
No.
Not having any? David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Oh, boy. Okay. Discussion and approval submitting the petition of Town of Mashpee for a special act authorizing the Town of Mashpee to lease certain town-owned land to the Boys and Girls Club of Cape Cod, Inc. Article 25, May 1, 2023, annual town meeting. So this is just us authorizing it?
Authorize us to put it to the House of Representatives to start the process through the legislative process to grant this for the Boys and Girls Club, which was voted in...
At town meeting.
Right. Anyone want to...
Motion on it?
All right. I move to approve sending the attached letter from the town manager to the state representative, David Viera, to support the petition to the general court for a special act authorizing the Town of Mashpee to lease certain town-owned land to the Boys and Girls Club of Cape Cod, Inc. Second.
First and second, any other questions? Discussion? Not having any? Kayla?
Yes.
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Hopefully that product, that process moves forward.
Yes.
Been talked about for quite a while. Additional topics, liaison reports?
One report I'd like to provide is that we are making significant headway on the town charter. We've essentially gone through all the sections systematically. Each member of the review committee was tasked with making, going through a particular section. We each came back and deliberated over each of the sections. Most of the changes are very subtle in nature, wordsmithing, I think, based on points raised. And, you know, we're moving forward and on schedule to bring something forward for May town meeting. Did I leave anything out?
We did vote unanimously for a preamble.
Preamble.
Oh, that was a substantive change that, based on, you know, the fact that we have gone through the exercise of changing the town seal based on cultural sensitive, sensitivity. I felt as though it would be good to provide context on, of the town to address some of those things, because the town charter, the way it was, has been, it starts off from incorporation in 1870. And it doesn't provide any kind of context to the historic nature of the town, which makes us unique and identifiably different than other towns within the region. So I felt as though we could come to an agreement on simple language that doesn't go into great detail and just puts a little bit of context to the historic nature of the town and provided a few different options for consideration, which were kind of, our homework was to read over them and come back and deliberate over at our next meeting. So that's kind of where it stands. And I think, you know, we'll come to an agreement on something.
Right. Yeah, I actually, I'm not part of the charter committee, but I get updates regularly. And I want to commend you for your recommendation and regarding that discussion. And I also want to commend John Miller for his leadership. Like I said, I, I think it's great that you guys, you know, giving that extra time, ladies, females, men, male and females. But, you know, you, you're giving a lot of your time and it's your efforts. Hopefully you're going to be rewarded by all the efforts that you're putting in. But again, I want to commend you for that recommendation and then, again, John Miller's leadership, so.
I just add that everybody on the committee is, I mean, it's actually been pretty smooth.
It's been very, it's been very interesting.
That's what I hear.
No major issues.
Which is great.
Yeah, no, everybody's been great to kind of work with.
Cooperation.
It's been good.
Perfect.
Been a great working group.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other liaison reports? Unfortunately, I, I was absent for a few weeks.
Actually, for you saying that you are absent, I, I would like to say, John, I commend you for the duty that you did over in Maui. I'm sure you, and as it was stated in the enterprise, you have many stories. I'm sure you do. But you, to be able to do that with your son, I mean, God bless you.
Thank you. Incredibly rewarding, that's for sure.
The only other one I had was for the environmental oversight. We now have...
A full board?
A full committee, except for, I thought, what's her name? Alex Zolo had put forward a letter of interest. I kind of...
I didn't see it.
We hadn't seen it.
All right. So I'd like to, you know, consider the letter of interest and at our next meeting, conduct an interview to put forward a recommendation. So I wanted to put that on the select board's radar. And then I guess we're steady chipping away at task and meeting regularly, so just wanted to provide an update on that.
That's great. Water, water quality updates? Anything?
None other at this time.
Great. Town manager updates?
Just want to bring to the attention of the board the possible change of the select board meeting date from November 6 to November 13, because the special election is November 7. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, what, what's happened is they have the, the voting before the actual election in this room, and then on the 7th, they're voting in this room. So it would be much easier if we could make a change from the 6th for the board meeting to the 13th of November. If that goes along, if everybody's okay with that. The setup and breakdown is the problem for the voters, you know, voting and all that.
That makes perfect sense. Does anybody on the board have any issues with that? So the 6th to the 13th?
Yes.
I'm coming off the cuff here, but I don't think they have a problem, so.
Yeah, so. So we'll just go with that.
Consent is to move it to the 13th.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Oktoberfest is taking place this Saturday. And I also wanted to mention that the road construction on 151 on the corridor project will be taking place on the holiday of Monday, October 9, unless there's some objection from the board. But I checked with the policy and there's nothing that prohibits it. So they want to...
Can we just cancel all road construction in Mashpee?
Well, if the board objected, we were gonna...
Is that an option?
We were gonna do something. The Recreation and Natural Resources Department received five AEDs or DFIBs valued at $8,990 raised by Friends of the Mashpee Council on Aging. So I just wanted to give them a shout out and make the board aware of that.
That's amazing.
That was a very nice gesture on their part. There's a major update to the town's accounting system, which is munis, that's taking place this week and expected to be completed by Monday, October 2. That's been certainly challenging to staff, to say the least. Orange Shirt Day, as Lynn mentioned, is on Saturday, September 30. Orange flags will be in the center of the Rotary in recognition of this day. And also on this Friday, I've encouraged or invited employees to wear orange, and they can even wear jeans.
Ooh, wow.
So, so I said, don't get used to it.
I know.
But we're, we're doing that on Friday.
Wow.
Had to twist his arm, but he did it.
No, not for the orange shirt. It was my idea to get that out, it was the jeans.
It was the jeans, yeah.
Twisted a little bit.
The orange shirt was always on the table, unexpected, yeah.
You know this is recorded, right?
I know, that's why I wanted to set that on the record. The fiscal year budgets and the capital improvement program request are due this upcoming Friday as well. There may be, because of this munis issue, there may be an extension on that. We did have an opening meeting law complaint, ruling from the Attorney General's Office relative to CPC violating the open meeting law. And I will have the assistant deliver that to the board. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Want me to read the motion?
Sure.
A motion to enter into executive session, session. I move that the board convene an executive session to discuss the deposition and value of real property of 35 Lake Avenue, Parcel 28-2-0, 409 Main Street, Parcel 36-80-415 Main Street, 38, 28-3-0, 0 Meeting House Road, Parcel 68-13B, and 0 Falmouth Road, Parcells 68 through 14, and 68-16. Pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A, 6 and C, Chapter 30B, Subsection 16, the chair having declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the board, from which the board will not reconvene in open session. Second.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, you too.
Did you guys vote? He said he didn't vote, I don't know if he did.
No, we didn't. Oh, I read the motion. Someone, she seconded, we didn't vote, you're right.
We're still on, too, okay.
Yes.
Oh, Michaela? Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes, my bad.